To ascertain the presence of a quorum. Counselor LaGuardia.
Present.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Bock.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Edwards. Counselor Asabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Janey. Present. Counselor Mahia. Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
And Counselor Wu. Madam President, please have a call. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would ask that all councilors and guests to please rise. Counselor Flynn will introduce our clergy today. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President. It's an honor for me to introduce a pastor in South Boston from the Mary Ellen McCormick, which includes the St. Monica's Parish, St. Augustine Parish, St. Vincent Parish, and St. Peter Parish, which is located in the West Broadway Development. And that's Father Peter DeFazio. He's a longtime advocate for residents in public housing, providing spiritual guidance, making sure that their voices are heard, especially the poor, the needy, our immigrant neighbors as well. He runs a tremendous program on food security, providing healthy meals to a lot of families in need. It's an honor for me to ask Father Peter to say a prayer. Father Peter's also the pastor for Counselor Michael Flaherty as well. Father Peter?
Thank you so much, Counselor. Thank you so much.
The Lord be with you. El Señor esté con ustedes. I'd like to just say thank you, first of all, to Counselor Ed Flynn for inviting me here today. It's true, so much of the great work that you do, and so much of the great work that I believe my parishioners are doing, that the people in my community are doing, to alleviate food insecurity, to help people who are homeless, to try to alleviate the crisis with addiction in our neighborhoods. So many of these issues are dear and near to your hearts, too. And so, we do invoke our loving God now as we begin this new council year. We come to our God and we say with gratitude today, we thank God. We thank God for the fellowship, and the friendship, and the camaraderie. We thank God for the promise of a new year together. We thank God for our new council members that begin their tenures today. We welcome the returning council members today. We thank our loving God, who loves all people, and asks that our God bless these council members and guide their deliberations, help them to always see all people as God's children, to bless and guide the work that you do on behalf of the people of the communities that we serve in Boston, mindful of the poor, mindful of the marginalized, mindful of those who are less fortunate than we are, mindful of those who are seniors, those who are struggling with different issues of economic security and insecurity. We pray also that we will be good stewards of the resources that we have been given. We pray also for our youth, our young adults. We pray for the world that they're inheriting. We pray for the environment. We pray for the safety of our neighborhoods, too. We pray indeed also that all of our parishioners, rich and poor, of all different walks of life, documented, undocumented, immigrant, non-immigrant, all our communities, of every race, every creed, every nationality, every religion, every orientation, we pray that all of us will build a better Boston together. And we do know, we do know, that it takes all of us working together with God as our guide, with God's Holy Spirit upon us. We ask now for divine wisdom, divine wisdom to come down upon this chamber, divine wisdom to guide all of our minds and hearts. And let us all marvel in thanksgiving and the joy of being together on this beautiful day. Won't you bow your head now for God's blessing? May Almighty God bless you and keep you. May the Lord's face shine upon you. May the Lord show you His mercy and give you His peace. Que el Señor te bendiga, que el rostro del Señor brillará sobre ti, que el Señor te muestre su misericordia y de tu su paz. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. That's a pleasure. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Madam Clerk, if you could please amend the attendance records? And thank you, Father Peter. Counselor Wu is present. Counselor Baker is present. Now, on to the order of business first, the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand as approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes are so approved. We will now move on to communications from His Honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0191 and 0192?
Thank you, Madam President. Message and order extending the city's acceptance of Mass General Law's Chapter 32B, Section 19, to be effective until June 30th, 2025. Upon my approval and execution of the written agreement with the Public Employees Committee, known as PEC, the PEC will continue to be the exclusive bargaining representative for the Coalition of Public Employees Bargaining Units and retirees of the City of Boston with respect to health insurance coverage until June 30th, 2025. The agreement extends reforms agreed upon in the current PEC agreement and affects further savings estimated to equal approximately $60 million over the five-year period. It also anticipates continued efforts to achieve additional savings through future health insurance procurements. Docket number 0192, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount, excuse me, of $1,794,683.47 in the form of a grant for the FY20 Senator Charles E. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative Grant, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, and reintegration programs.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0191 and docket 0192 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0193 to 0195?
Docket number 0193, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $1 million from the U.S. Department of Interior under the Land and Water Conservation Fund, LWCF Act of 1965, to be administered by the Boston Parks and Recreation Department for the purpose of making capital improvements to McConnell Park in Dorchester. The Parks and Recreation Department will use these funds to reconstruct the athletic fields, including a challenger field, Boston's first inclusive ball field, and to add climate resiliency measures. Docket number 0194, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $491,316 in the form of a grant for First Responders Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act Cooperation Agreement, awarded by the United States Health and Human Services, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund collaborative effort between Boston Fire Department, First Responders, the MIA's Office of Recovery Services, the Boston Public Health Commission, and community-based organizations to improve the city's response to opioid overdoses. This is year two of a four-year grant. And docket number 0195, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $200,000 in the form of a grant for 2019 Transportation Planning Grant, awarded by Massachusetts Gaming Commission, to be administered by the Boston Transportation Department. The purpose of this grant is to fund a portion of the design costs under TETRA-Tech contract for the Sullivan Square-Rutherford Ave project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0193 to 0195 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0196?
Docket number 0196, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $80,370.40 in the form of a grant for the federal FY19 Violence Against Women Act STOP Grant, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a civilian's violence advocate who provides services for victims in Jamaica Plain and East Boston, and overtime for all the civilian domestic violence advocates.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0196. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0196 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0197?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0197, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $45,000 in the form of a grant for the FY19 Violence Against Women Act STOP Grant, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a civilian domestic violence advocate who provides services for victims in Jamaica Plain and East Boston, and overtime for all the civilian domestic violence advocates.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0197. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0197 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0198?
Docket number 0198, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $20,000 in the form of a grant for the Age Friendly Bench Program, awarded by Alston Brighton Community Development Corporation, to be administered by the Public Works Department. The grant will fund the installation of age-friendly benches in Alston Brighton's Business District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0198. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0198 has been passed.
Docket number 0199, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 National Violence Death Reporting System Grant, awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund data collection by the Bureau of Investigation Services and the Drug Control Unit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0199. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0199 has been passed. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0200?
Docket 0200, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $1,884 in the form of a grant for the Child and Adult Care Food Program, awarded by the United States Department of Agriculture, passed through the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture or Resources, to be administered by the Boston Center for Youth and Families. The grant will fund a healthy breakfast and snack to children enrolled in this program.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0200. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0200 has been passed. Now, moving on to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0201 and docket 0202 together?
Thank you, Madam President. Notice as you see from the mayor of the reappointment of Lorna Rivera as a member to the Boston School Committee for term expiring January 1st, 2024. And docket number 0202, notice as you see from the mayor of the reappointment of Alexandra Oliver Devilla as a member of the Boston School Committee for term expiring January 1st, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0201 and docket 0202 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, could you read docket 0203?
Docket 0203, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Richard Davies as a commissioner to the Air Pollution Control Commission for a term expiring September 1st, 2022.
Thank you. Docket 0203 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, could you read docket 0204?
Docket 0204, notice as you see from the mayor of the appointment of Margaret McKenna as a chairperson to the Boston Human Rights Commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0204 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, could you read docket 0205?
Docket 0205, communication was received from Maureen A. Joyce, City Auditor, regarding the City of Boston's fiscal 2019 comprehensive annual financial report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0205 will be placed on file. Docket 0206?
Docket 0206, communication was received from the city clerk regarding the 2019/2020 university accountability statistical report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0206 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0207 through 0212? We'll read those all together.
Thank you, Madam President. Notice as you see from the City Council President Janey of the appointment of Lydia Edwards as a trustee of the Boston Neighborhood Housing Trust for term expiring December 31st, 2020. Docket 0208, notice as you see from the mayor of the reappointment of Catherine Hataway as a trustee of the Neighborhood Housing Trust for term expiring January 14th, 2022. Docket number 0209, notice as you see from the mayor of the reappointment of Harry Smith as a trustee of the Neighborhood Housing Trust Fund for a term expiring January 14th, 2022. Docket number 0210, notice as you see from the mayor of the reappointment of Mark Lu as a trustee of the Neighborhood Housing Trust Fund for a term expiring January 14th, 2022. Docket number 0211, notice as you see from the mayor of the reappointment of Mozic Hasibani as a trustee of the Neighborhood Housing Trust for a term expiring January 14th, 2022. And docket number 0212, notice as you see from the mayor of the reappointment of Sister Margaret Leonard as a trustee of the Neighborhood Housing Trust Fund for a term expiring January 14th, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0207 through 0212 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0213 and docket 0214?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0213, notice as you see from the mayor of the reappointment of Trin Nguyen as a trustee of the Neighborhood Job Trust for term expiring January 14th, 2022. Docket number 0214, notice as you see from the mayor of the reappointment of Counselor Frank Baker as a trustee of the Neighborhood Jobs Trust for a term expiring January 14th, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0213 and docket 0214 will be placed on file. Could you please read docket 0215 and docket 0216 together?
Thank you. Docket 0215, notice as you see from the mayor of Felicia Jacques as a member of the Community Preservation Committee for term expiring January 1st, 2023. And docket number 0216, notice as you see from the mayor of Carol Downs as a member of the Community Preservation Committee for term expiring January 1st, 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0215 and 0216 will be placed on file. We will now move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0217 through 0220? We'll read those all together.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0217, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for hearing on issues related to stray voltage in the City of Boston. Docket number 0218, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss ways to support tenants facing eviction and displacement. Docket number 0219, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss after-hours construction and development issues in the City of Boston. And docket number 0220, Counselor Flynn offered the following order for hearing to discuss safety and construction sites in the City of Boston.
Thank you. Counselor Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, this is a refile from the past couple of years. Stray voltage, as we know, Boston has old electrical cabinets. And during the winter months, the salt can erode the wiring in these cabinets. And when people walk by, oftentimes, and with their pets especially, they can become electrocuted. It has happened many times in Boston. We continue to have a working group with city officials, with National Grid, with Eversource, Massachusetts Society, Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. We continue to have a working group to talk about our next steps. And we're going to continue discussing this topic, Madam President. Thank you.
Did you want to speak on the other dockets that we all read together?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Madam President, the second one is 0218, eviction and displacement. We're seeing a lot of our residents being displaced across the city, especially our low-income residents, low-income families, seniors, persons with disabilities. We had discussions over the last several years. One aspect I would like to focus on as part of this process is to take, to have a reasonable notice period and protections for all tenants facing evictions and displacements, as well as resources that can help them stay in their homes as well. While seniors, the disabled, low-income residents should be afforded at least two years before they're evicted, but we must provide them also with the legal counsel as well. I believe this is a conversation worth having. I'm looking forward to the discussion and continuing to work with my colleagues who have done a lot of great work on this issue, Madam President. Thank you. Madam President, the third one, after-hours construction. We are seeing a lot of after-hours construction. This is a refile. We are seeing a lot of after-hours construction taking place in our city, especially at nighttime and on the weekends. We want a system where residents are notified about when a project will take place, and then able, especially on the weekends, and make sure it's a transparent process. But we also want to make sure as part of this process, we need to do a thorough rodent control, pest control program, and listening to the residents on quality of life concerns during this period. And then the final one, Madam President, also it's a refile, is construction safety. We're seeing a lot of development taking place across our city. We want to make sure every construction worker is safe. I want to continue in this body, and the mayor wants to continue working with the building trades to make sure every person that is on a construction site is safe and afforded all the protections, worker protections. We do see a lot of, I have seen in my experience, a lot of non-union projects being built, and a lot of these construction workers don't have the necessary training, they don't have the necessary protections, worker protections. So I want to make sure that every worker is given the opportunity to be safe, and we must do work to protect all workers on construction sites in the city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Counselor Flaherty?
Please add my name to all of the tickets, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor O'Malley?
Please add my name to docket 0217, 0218, 0219, and 0220, Madam President.
Anyone else looking to add their name? Please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bock, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George. We've got Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Mahia, Counselor O'Malley, thank you so much, and Counselor Wu, as well as the chair. Thank you. Dockets 0217 to 0220 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. Moving on to docket 0221, Madam Clerk, could you please read it into the record?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0221, Counselor Campbell offered the following order for hearing to review the Boston Police Department's Body-Worn Camera Pilot Program final study, results, and the status of implementation.
Thank you so much. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So just, this is a refile, but just to give some context, in the spring of 2016, the administration, along with the police department, first of all, hearing that babies, makes me think of my babies. In the spring of 2016, the administration, along with the police department, agreed to do a six-month body camera program after, of course, the advocacy of our former colleagues, Yancey, Counselor Jackson, and Congresswoman Presley. I, when I got to the council, along with my colleagues, and in conjunction with Commissioner Evan's Social Justice Task Force, held several community meetings throughout the city to not only inform residents about that pilot program, but also to ensure there was community process to inform the policy that governed the pilot program. We received an overwhelmingly positive response to those meetings, and the final body camera policy program was ultimately adopted for the pilot. The pilot was subsequently extended for an additional six months, and at the conclusion of that program, Northeastern issued a report. And in that report, which was dated January 8th, they found overall positive results, and there was a decrease, actually, in internal affairs and police misconduct complaints. Later, a full study was released, and FY2019, this body voted to invest $2 million in the pilot program. This is the third time I am filing this hearing order, so I'm really hoping that this year that we will actually have a hearing on this, not only for, obviously, new colleagues to weigh in, but for the public to weigh in. It's obviously shown up in the media space in many aspects, but the question is, who was at the table to inform the policy that governs the full program now? How much do we continue to think about investing in this program, the investment this body made in the pilot program, and now in the subsequent final program? What was the effectiveness? All of these questions will hopefully be asked at the hearing, and will give an opportunity not only for us, but also for the public to weigh in. And lastly, I'll add, I mean, this is one of the tools, and it's one of many tools, that we use to ensure accountability, but also training for our officers. There's value in the footage from these recordings. It's been used for other purposes, possibly in court, but also to improve the interactions between officers, civilians, and certain communities. So I think it's a great time to have the hearing, particularly before we go into budget season. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Campbell. Anyone looking to speak or add their name? Could you please add, Madam Clerk, could you please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Bock, Counselor Braden, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and the chair? Thank you. Docket 0221 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. We're going to move on to docket 0222. Madam Clerk, could you please read that into the record?
Docket number 222, Counselor Campbell offered the following order for hearing regarding automobile rates in Boston.
Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is a refile that I filed last year towards the end of the year, so we weren't able to have a hearing, but obviously, it's still a major issue, not only for constituents in my district, but also across the city of Boston. So in October of 2019, we filed this. And anyone who owns a car in the City of Boston can probably attest to the high rates of insurance, but after hearing from a few But after hearing from a few constituents on the matter, and then looking into it a little bit deeper, I connected with the Attorney General's Office and was really disturbed at the data. Research on this issue shows that auto insurance in minority and poor communities costs more on average than it does in wealthier communities, and this is regardless of whether the driver has an excellent driving record. In the most heavily concentrated minority and lowest-income communities, including Dorchester, Mattapan, Roxbury, and High Park, drivers pay nearly twice as much and receive significantly less coverage. This presents, I think, a serious economic hardship for residents and families in our community that rely on cars to get to work, to school, and other destinations, especially in areas, including in parts of my district, where there is either transportation deserts or lack of access to quality, reliable, and fast public transit options. In the most highly concentrated minority communities, the average premium for all drivers was 90% more per vehicle, roughly $449, than the average premium in communities with the lowest concentration of minority residents. Legislation has been filed at the state level to address these disparities, but I think this hearing can shed light on how these disparities show up in the city and how we might work to reduce them. I'll add that in California, for example, there are regulations that limit the effects of certain rating factors by basing premiums primarily on driving record, miles driven, and years of driving experience. Are there actually more crashes in Roxbury and Dorchester, or is there an assumption by insurance companies based on stereotypes about people of color or low-income communities that try to justify keeping these rates high and making our residents take on such a heavy cost burden? So I've heard from residents in my district, and actually, most recently, some are petitioning to change their zip codes so they don't live in Mattapan anymore, and this is one of the reasons why. So I think we need to take a serious look, a serious look at the disparities, but also create a space where residents can come forward, share their experiences, and we can get a sense of how wide-ranging the problem is. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counsel Campbell. Counsel Flaherty?
Madam President, I rise to have my name added, commend the maker, and look forward to a hearing. The fact that there's a motor vehicle accident on I-93 from folks from, say, the Cape should not impact the automobile rates from folks in Dorchester, Roxbury, South Boston, and Charleston. And then whether it's on I-90 coming in, it impacts Alston-Brighton. So no matter where it's happening, the fact that it's happening on the expressway, it should go to the automobile driver and maybe where they live, as opposed to where the accident actually took place. So I look forward to the expedited hearing, and through the chair, ask the maker to consider also increasing the limits of coverage. Currently, right now, its mandatory limits are 2040. They've been in place for decades. Whenever there is an accident, minimum coverage, because of health care costs, have increased significantly, they don't even barely scratch the surface. So I think folks should be required to have more than 2040 compulsory insurance, and/or be required to have under-insurance, again, in the event of an accident or an injury. $20,000 doesn't scratch the surface to someone's medical bills, and/or their lost wages, et cetera. So I look forward to a healthy discussion, and maybe those are issues that could percolate at the hearing as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Anyone else looking to speak on the matter? Add their names. Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mahia, Counselor O'Malley, Counsel Wu, and Counsel Flaherty, you are adding your name, and please add the Chair. Thank you so much. Docket 0222 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. Moving on to docket 0223, I've been informed by the clerk that Counsel Sabi George moves for substitution. Madam Clerk, could you please read the new language for docket 0223?
It's the same. Docket 0223, Counselor Sabi George offered the following order for hearing to examine mental health and suicide prevention resources in the city of Boston.
Counsel Sabi George?
Thank you, Madam President. And that substitution is due to a spelling error in the initially filed hearing order. I'm refiling this important hearing order to examine mental health and suicide prevention resources in the city of Boston. I filed this hearing to continue my work to combat stigma and build awareness about mental health in the city of Boston by examining the strength of our resources. Suicide continues to be a significant public health crisis affecting individuals and families, especially with the rising rate, suicide rate in our city. As we know too well, untreated mental illness has dire consequences. The only way to prevent more senseless tragedies is to ensure that we are being proactive as a city about the quality of our mental health care and its accessibility. In addition to increasing the number of providers, we need to ensure that we have access to providers that have cultural, linguistic, racial, and ethnic diversity in their practice. We need to work to ensure that all of our schools have full-time social-emotional support specialists. As a recent high school risk survey, behavior survey, measured that 12% of our students in the Boston Public Schools have reported seriously considering attempting suicide. Our residents deserve to have access to comprehensive and affordable mental health services, and I look forward to continuing these conversations and finding solutions to these pressing issues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Anyone else looking to speak on the matter? Add their name. Counselors Bach, Braden, Campbell, Edwards, Flaherty, Flynn, Mahia, O'Malley, Wu, and the Chair, and Arroyo. Please, thank you. Docket 0223 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. We will take dockets 0224 through 0226 together. Madam Clerk, could you please read them into the record?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0224, Counselor Sabi George offered the following ordinance relative to the establishment of an independent mental health commission. Docket number 0225, Counselor Sabi George offered the following ordinance to create special commission on ending family homelessness. Docket number 0226, Counselor Sabi George offered the following ordinance to provide for safe disposal of Sharps through the establishment of a product stewardship program. And docket number 02...
26.
6. 27.
Yes, just the three.
Do you want me to read that? 27, but you want...
That's going to be a substitution.
Okay.
Yep. Counselor Sabi George, you want to speak to those three dockets?
Thank you again, Madam President. I will speak to them separately, and I ask that colleagues who are so moved to sign on to them separately so that we can identify each of those. This, again, is a refile based on the ordinance I filed last year to create an independent mental health commission that rose through my work hosting a mental health roundtable over the last year. This refile has some edits based on that work over the last year, and this series of bi-monthly meetings with Boston-area service providers focused on critical barriers to treatment in our health care system, including insufficient school-based providers, difficulty in licensing and credentialing, disparity of insurance reimbursements for mental health services, and inadequate professional development for providers with cultural, ethnic, language, and racial diversity as a particular focus. These roundtable members, who are mental health care providers in a variety of capacities, identify many pressing needs, including the need to create a commission here in the city of Boston. This commission will serve as an advisory group to the mayor, the city council, and city agencies to produce policies that promote mental well-being, increase access to mental health care, and remove structural barriers to treatment. One of the biggest challenges to making progress and change the silos that exist within our government systems, one of our biggest challenges, and this commission would work to break down some of those barriers and eliminate those silos. We will bring together through this commission delegates from the city agencies, because it's all of our concern when we think about this work and helping create better access to mental health services. The primary goal of this commission would be to improve coordination of services and to ensure inter-agency collaboration. That is for 224. Would you like me to give comments on the...
Why don't we, yeah, why don't we see if anyone wants to comment? Anyone looking to speak to docket 0224 may do so now. Add their name. Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Mahia, Counselor O'Malley, and Counsel Wu, and please add the Chair. We'll move on. Counsel Sabi George, if you want to speak to docket 2224.
I do, thank you, Madam President. This, again, is a refile that was filed towards the end of last year.
2225, excuse me.
2225, which is a refile to establish a special commission to end family homelessness in the city of Boston. Massachusetts and the city of Boston continue to face raising, rising levels of family homelessness. Just released 2019 HUD Census data on homelessness indicates that Massachusetts continues to experience the largest percentage of increase of homeless families nationwide, and Boston continues to be the city with the third-highest number of homeless families in the entire United States. We have been third for 10 years. Many who do, many don't think of family homelessness as a real problem. We know of the 5,000 students in the Boston Public Schools experiencing homelessness, and I believe it's because we can't believe our lying eyes, because it's not in front of us, and we can't believe and sort of appreciate that we have failed so many families here in the Commonwealth and in the city. This ordinance is a result of monthly roundtable, a monthly roundtable series, including up to 60 service providers in the greater Boston area who work with our Boston families. Over the last two and a half years, we've worked to create, and this commission moves us to that next level, to create an action plan that will end family homelessness in the city of Boston, and my hope is in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I look forward to moving forward with this ordinance, and I look forward to ending family homelessness here in the city of Boston.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else looking to speak to this matter or add their name? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, are you looking to speak?
Yes, yes, Madam President.
Counsel Flynn? God bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name. I want to thank Counselor Sabi George for her incredible work on the homeless crisis that we're facing in our state. One issue that the council and the mayor have been working closely on, as well as the council, is the crisis of homeless veterans across our city, across our country. Under President Obama, he had an initiative to end homelessness, homelessness for our veterans and military families, and they made incredible strides throughout the country, especially here in Boston, in making sure that any veteran returning from overseas or stateside, actually, have a place to stay. So I just want to say thank you to my colleagues on the city council, the Mayor Walsh, the city administration, for working hard to make sure our veterans have a place to call home in the city of Boston. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. We're still on docket 0225. Anyone else looking to add their name? Counsel Mahia, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, as well as the Chair. Docket 0225 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. We will move on to docket 0226. Counsel Sabi George, would you like to speak on this matter?
I would, thank you. Thank you, Madam, thank you again, Madam President. This here is a refile in a very new form. My desire to have an ordinance that establishes a mandatory Sharps Takeback Program in retail pharmacies across the city of Boston. This is the third refiling of this ordinance, so it is in a new form, so I hope everyone takes some time to read it. It is critically important that we're preventing improper Sharps disposal across our city. We talk a lot here on the council about the 700,000 needles the city has picked up across the kiosks and across our neighborhoods, due very much in large part to the opioid crisis that we're facing here in Boston and in the region and everywhere. But we also know that improperly discarded Sharps at home are a significant problem, and we have only 12 locations across the city where you could discard of needles safely and for free. With this ordinance, it would require pharmacies across the city to have kiosks similar to drug-take-back kiosks. We need needles out of our trash, and we need them properly disposed. Last year, we, myself and my office, ran the city's first-ever Citywide Needle Takeback Day in partnership with community health centers, and it was quite, it was successful, and we look forward to doing it again this spring. We learned through that how many families across the city, how many residents across the city of Boston were dealing with chronic illnesses and other treatments, and dealing with addiction, need proper places to discard of needles, and we found that through these sites across the city last year. We look forward to this work, we look forward to getting to this early in the year, as we know it's a needed resource in our city. I look forward to an expedited hearing on this early in the year, passage of this ordinance so that residents across the city can properly discard of their needles. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Counsel Edwards?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to add my name, and I wanted to congratulate the sponsor of this ordinance. I didn't realize it was three times, but I do hope we can get it done this time, specifically because I think what the sponsor, my colleague, is doing is really widening the table and demanding that those who are putting needles into our communities, the pharmacies and other manufacturers for medical use, need to be at the table to help collect them, need to be providing infrastructure, either at their store sites or adding to the 12 different collection sites that the city is putting out there, and to our Sharps team, which is working extremely hard, had the opportunity to work with them in the North End. I'm seeing that the city of Boston is doing what it can do, many of our schools are doing what they can do, our neighbors are doing what we can do, so we're asking that the pharmacies and those who are part of putting this product out there be at the table to also do what they can do. So I wanted to, again, congratulate the sponsor.
Thank you so much. Anyone else looking to speak or add their name? We're on docket 0226. Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Bach, Counsel Braden, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Mahia, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, and please add the Chair. I have been informed by the clerk that Counsel Sabi George moves for substitution for docket 0227. Madam Clerk?
Docket number 0227, Counsel Sabi George offered the following order for a working session regarding the opioid crisis.
Counsel Sabi George?
Thank you, and this is the last of this long run, and I do appreciate Counsel Edwards' comments on docket number 226. I failed to mention in my comments that we would have over 100 locations across the city of Boston where that ordinance to be in place for needle takeback. So thank you, Counsel Edwards, for your comments. This is, again, a refile with a substitution today. We had filed it as a working order, a working session order. It should be filed as a hearing order, and we corrected that this morning. As we all know, and as I've spoke and referenced a few times this morning or this afternoon, that we have a problem here in the city of Boston, and we are dealing as best we can to tackle the challenges that we face in the face of this opioid crisis. We know that Boston is the regional hub for support services for those experiencing homelessness, for those experiencing mental illness, and those experiencing substance-use disorders. And we, as a city, are, continue to be disproportionately impacted by this crisis. Whether it's the volume of services compounded with the growth of the epidemic, including the use of fentanyl, it exceeds our capacity as a city to combat this crisis. And through our work on the council over the last few years, in collaboration and partnership with the administration, we've learned a tremendous amount about this crisis and how, in collaboration, we can make some gains. This hearing order is designed to create a setting where the Boston delegation, electeds here at the city council, electeds at the state level, those that are doing this work in the administration for sure, the Office of Recovery Services, the Health and Human Services Department, both at the city level through the Walsh administration, as well as at the state level, need to be at the table together to discuss best practices, to understand what we're doing, what we need to be doing, and to share information about things that are happening in other cities and states and places in our world. A number of us have visited safe injection facilities in Vancouver and Toronto late this fall. I was in Philadelphia, looking at their work around their response to the opioid crisis and how they are responding to the opioid crisis in Philadelphia in particular. Look forward to continuing the public conversation around these questions and this crisis, and this hearing order gives us the format in which to do that publicly and in collaboration with one another. Thank you, Madam President.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Counsel Sabi George. Anyone else looking to speak or add their name to docket 0227? We have Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Bach, Counsel Braden, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, and please add the Chair. And just for clarity's sake, because we covered a lot of dockets there, docket 0223, docket 0224, docket 0225, docket 0226, and docket 0227 are all being referred to the Committee of the Whole. Before we move on, I want to acknowledge that we are joined in the chamber by former city councillor Tito Jackson. Is he still with us today? Thank you for being here. Thank you. All right, there he is. Moving on, Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0228?
Docket 0228, Counsel Campbell offered the following order for hearing to review the Boston Community Ombudsman Oversight Panel and Civilian Review the Boston Community Ombudsman Oversight Panel and Civilian Review Board possibilities.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So in January of 2017, and then again in October of 2019, I introduced this hearing order to review the Community Ombudsman Oversight Panel. And so I'm re-filing it today for a third time, with the hopes of actually having a hearing this term on it. And just to remind folks what the co-op panel does, it's an independent group of civilians appointed by the mayor with backgrounds in law, criminal justice, and/or the civil process. It was originally established by executive order in 2007 by then Mayor Menino, and it was established to review civilian appeals against the police department with the goal of promoting professionalism in the department and to enhance community relations. In December 2015, the panel, which was facing a backlog of cases and a limited capacity to ensure fair and thorough investigations, put out recommendations in a report that included concrete ways to strengthen the panel. Later, by executive order in June of 2017, which was after I filed the hearing order in January of 2017, Mayor Walsh reestablished the panel, he made changes to the panel, and acted on some of those recommendations. This hearing, I think, will allow us not only to go into depth and talk about the report that the co-op panel introduced in 2015, but also to talk about the changes that the mayor made in the public space, how they're going, the effectiveness of those changes, but more importantly, to get an update currently on the co-op panel. There are currently members that are not serving anymore in the panel, there are suggestions that maybe there are cases which are waiting to be heard, but because there isn't adequate composition of the panel, how do you do your job effectively? And because we haven't had a hearing on this, no one really knows what's going on. So this is an opportunity to review the co-op panel, and also at the same time, to engage the public, and particularly those who are interested in this topic, on civilian review possibilities, which have been a topic for years. And that can mean different things for different people. I look forward to not only working with my colleagues here at the administration, members of the community, of course, also the public safety unions, who I was in contact with last year regarding this refile, and of course, the police department as well, and look forward to a timely hearing on what is supposed to be not only a great entity and great body, but a panel that is tasked with doing really incredibly important work, not only continuing to maintain relationships between communities of color, but also civilians in the police department, but to ensure accountability that's not an easy job. So they need to be equipped, they need to have resources, and of course, adequate human capital. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Counselor Campbell, anyone else looking to speak or add their name? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Braden, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and please add the Chair. Docket 0228, will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. We're moving on to docket 0229. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket 0229, Counselor O'Malley offers the following resolution affirming that the climate crisis is a health emergency.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm delighted for our new colleagues for a whole host of reasons, chiefly that we've got such a great new experience, fresh energy, diversity of opinion and background, and secondly, we have a new audience to hear some of my well-worn tropes that perhaps hasn't heard it before.[826.11][826.11](Laughter). I begin nearly every conversation and remarks about climate, talking about how every fiscal conservative ought to be an environmentalist as well. I think that we have adequately made the compelling case that fixing gas leaks saves money for taxpayers, building energy-efficient housing is going to save money for rent, for tenants down the line, having a better way to address recycling and trash pickup and composting and textiles is actually going to save taxpayer money as well. And while that's important, and I certainly will not abandon that, that lens in which we look at the environmental movement, I want to really set the tone today for our work for this year and beyond in affirming and recognizing the fact that the climate crisis has reached the level of a public health emergency.
That's right.
Don't take my word for it. Look at the news, look at what is happening currently in Australia. There have been half a billion animals who've lost their lives, there have been nearly 30 humans who have lost their lives. We see it in the United States. It used to be that about 600 people per year would die from heat-related illnesses. That number is now 1,300. It has more than doubled in a matter of years. We are experiencing it. It was 72 degrees this weekend, it's going to be 19 degrees tomorrow. Now, I always caution, you can't confuse weather with climate, but there is no doubt that we are living with the effects of climate change. There were three nor'easters to hit Boston several years ago in the month of March. We had never had more than one in one calendar year. We had three in a 30-day, less than a 30-day period. So as we talk about intersectionality, as we talk about how things can be connected, it's important to look at our work on climate through the public health lens. And not only public health, climate change is a social justice issue, it is a racial justice issue, it is a jobs issue, it relates to a future green economy, it's a housing issue, it relates to disaster displacement, and under all of those sort of rubrics or lenses or ways you look at it, it is indeed a public health issue. Now, many, many, many other municipalities around the world are taking this approach as it deals with climate. In fact, there are 1,307 local governments in 25 countries, representing 810 million people, who have declared climate change as a public health emergency. I am hopeful that today, with your help and with your support, we will be the 1,308th municipality to sign on. There are more than 100 national public health groups that agree with us, there are more than 10,000 scientists from virtually every country in the world who have declared climate change as an emergency. And I think that this is a way that we can not only address it as we put forth work continuing on development, on net zero carbon buildings that we've been had a great success on, on community choice energy, which I've been proud to partner with on this and so many issues, the at-large counsel from Rosendale. There's so much work that we can do in this space. Many of you read the article in the newspaper in Boston Globe over the weekend about recycling rates, and in fact, that many municipalities are actually burying their recycling because it is significantly less expensive to do so than to actually pay to have it recycled, and the market is now essentially non-existent. If we talk about why it makes sense to move away potentially from single-stream recycling, looking at other ways to do it, we can talk about the savings to the taxpayer, we can talk about the savings to the environment, we can also talk about what the public health piece is, well. And make no mistake about it, we've got a great team in place here at City Hall. I know this is an issue that each and every one of you, to a person, feels passionately about, cares deeply about. We've got some incredible allies, people like mothers out front who have joined us, and I want to specifically thank Andy Krasner, who's been working very, very closely with me, as well as Ricky Harvey and so many others, to get this resolution before us today. But this is not only a, an important resolution to affirm what we know to be the truth, but I really think it will help set the tone for the work that we have to do ahead. This body has led on climate. I have been so incredibly proud to have worked with each and every one of you and other colleagues who no longer serve with us to address these issues, but the work has to even take a new sense of urgency. And I'm hopeful that by passing this resolution today, we will not only affirm that urgency, but we will build a bigger coalition going forward in, in really addressing this. The federal government has completely abdicated their responsibility, not only abdicated their responsibility, they have put forth proposals that are undoing decades, generations of work in this space. It is up to cities and towns to lead. Boston can be a national and an international leader. Let's set this tone the right way today, and let's get to work. I ask for suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley moves for suspension of the rules and seeks adoption of docket 0229. All in favor? Oh, people, people want to add their names? Yes, wonderful. Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Wu, and please add the Chair. Counselor Matt O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0229. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended, and the resolution has been adopted. I have been informed by the clerk that Counselor Mejia is moving for substitution for docket 0230. All those in favor for the substitution?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0230?
Docket 0230, Counselor Mejia offers the following order for hearing addressing civil rights and the creation of sanctuary safe spaces in Boston.
Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. But before, a stand-up, by the way. Can you guys hear me? So before I start, I just want to say that I made a mistake earlier, and I wasn't sure how this worked, but I do want to sign on to the body cams. So I didn't raise my hand, I wasn't sure how many times I could do that, but I definitely want to be a part of that.
Thank you so much. We will get that clear.
So, can we, can we clarify that?
Yes, we will get that clear, Counselor Mejia. You have the floor for your docket. Thank you.
Okay, you know, I got you, girl. Okay. So I'm going to read, I'm going to stay on message and on my script. So first, thank you, Counselor President Janey, and thanks to all my colleagues on the council for being so warm and welcoming to me and our staff since our arrival here in our council office. And I want to thank the mayor and his staff for his generous reception into City Hall. I stand here with my proud sisters and the few brothers that are still left up in here to serve on the most diverse city council in Boston's history. I need to thank, very importantly, the people of Boston, many of the residents who took time out of their busy lives to exercise their free and democratic right this past September and November. Because of you, this once local kid from Boston who landed here as an immigrant with tight shoes and open dreams is standing today on this day as a city council representative. I stand on the shoulders of many who carried me into this building as a sign that everyone counts. I want to recognize the incredible team of folks who helped me along this journey. Each of you hold a special place in my heart. Te amo. Los amos a todos. I can never pass a day without saying to Annalise, my daughter, I love you for all that you have done to shine hope in my life. Like always, we take this journey together. And my mom, for whom this day is your day too. The journey was never easy, but mami estamos aquí, es presente. We are here, present. And you have helped set in motion the hope for a future for others like me, like Annalise, and like all of us. And to all of mi familia, thank you. Muchas gracias y muchos besos. Today, I stand before everyone here honored as the first Afro-Latina immigrant to represent all of the city of Boston as an at-large city counselor. As many of you know, the story of my family and journey to Boston, like many others who call this place home, has been about the immigrant experience. My mom left the Dominican Republic with a suitcase full of dreams to build a better future for us in this country. As an Afro-Latina, as a single mom who was raised by an undocumented mother, growing up in a life of poverty, I had to learn how, at a very young age, how to navigate and push past the barriers of bureaucracy to navigate the complicated pathways to government services, which too often is designed to keep people like me and others separated from any form of real decision-making process. Decisions as simple as how, as how and where we go to speak about safety around our neighborhood and other issues that infringe upon our civil rights. This is how I started my path to community organizing and advocacy. This work has allowed me to work alongside many of you who are in this room today, from various cultures and generations, who help every day call upon their strength to speak for themselves and for others, young people, women activists, Boston school parents, and many others. I look forward to bringing my background and voice to the, to the Boston City Council and working alongside my fellow counselors, who are seeking to, seeking ways to meaningfully engage Boston residents. I'm getting to the part that I'm here to talk about, don't worry. I look forward to working with each of you and every one of you to find ways to engage with and connect with all Boston residents to how we do business in our city government. I want to focus on improving pathways for civic engagement so that more Boston diverse voices are involved in decisions regarding our public schools, the development of affordable housing, and ensuring equitable access to Boston's economic opportunities. In the end, I want to be about the work of creating space for all voices to be heard. And I've always said throughout my entire journey that all means all, because nothing about us, without us, is for us. The same obstacles that I faced as a young girl navigating a web of underfunded and underserved governmental programs still exist today. If we want real change, progress is best made through civic engagement, including involvement in the city budget approval process, oversight of city agencies, and other legislative actions in City Hall. But we can't participate if we don't know how or are too afraid to do so. Today, 28% of Boston is foreign-born. 91% of Greater Boston's new population growth comes from international immigrants to this region. Four out of 10 countries of origin arriving in Boston area are Spanish-speaking. Eso quiere decir que cuatro de los diez países aquí hablan español. Just in case you don't have a translation service, I could do that for myself. In 2019, Pew Research found that 22, 220, 220,000 undocumented people live in the Greater Boston area, making Boston one of the top 12 metro areas for undocumented people. According to the Boston Globe, in 2017, the year that 45 took office, arrests for undocumented immigrants in Boston skyrocketed up to 50%, while the national arrest rate only rose 30%. These civil, these issues impact not only our civil rights, but how we are, how will we be counted in the upcoming census. If people are living in fear, they're not going to be counted. And that is why, using my lived experience as a child of a woman who was undocumented and as someone who continues to work with those who are living in fear of deportation, I am submitting my very first action to the Boston City Council in order for a hearing addressing civil rights and the creation of sanctuary safe spaces in Boston, to examine and solicit public feedback regarding the latest deportation and law enforcement sweeps in public spaces, and its effect on immigrant residents and others impacted by these actions, with the aim to engage all authorities involved in coming to a solution that does not further impede meaningful conversations, but instead create policy to reach, seek to improve transparency and accountability. We have a responsibility to protect our most vulnerable and uphold our most basic civil rights, the right to free from harm, the right to be heard, because as I stand here today in this chamber, that long-ago kid with tight shoes and open dreams, I will swear on this day with my colleagues at my side, and all the people of Boston, that we will be heard, all of our voices, and say out loud that everyone, everyone counts. Thank you.[1670.11][1670.11](Applause). I just say thank you, and...
Thank you so much, Counselor Mejia. Anyone looking to add their name? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, and please add the Chair. Docket 0230.
Thank you, Madam, Madam President. And I just want to thank the maker, Counselor Mejia, for offering this before us today. I am excited about this work ahead and your contributions that I think will not just be, will not just be well noted, but critical to our work as a body and to the future of this city. Congratulations on your first speech today, and welcome to the Boston City Council.
Thank you so much, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to applaud and congratulate our new counselor. And simply to say, one, it's about time, you know, welcome, and I'm excited for not only issues she will work on and bring to the forefront, but I did want to stress one piece that I thought was really important in what you spoke about, all means all. And frequently, in the immigration context, we don't talk about those folks who are undocumented. And for you to stress that piece is critically important. If you know the city of Boston, if you know the history of this city, whether it's Irish, Italian, those who came over, Jews, you name it, many were undocumented. And now... And now, when we raise that issue and particularly focus on those who are undocumented, who don't have a pathway now, for example, we tend to get a lot of emails and calls that aren't so nice. So look forward to working in partnership with you on these critical issues, but really pulling apart that piece which is critical and those folks who are often left out. So thank you and congratulations on the first hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you very much. I echo my sisters-in-service's comments to our newest colleague, Counselor Mejia. Thank you so much for your leadership outside of this body and now inside this body. We look forward to working with you. I wanted to add on to some of the comments specifically about this hearing order. As you know, East Boston High School has come into focus recently for many folks in dealing with the intersection of policing, of immigration, and educating and BPS. And so I wanted to comment on that, and I want to make sure that as this conversation is going to evolve, I am going to be a stalwart advocate for the folks, those everyday folks who show up in East Boston High School, our teachers, our principal. Those folks are fighting every day to educate our kids, and I did not want there to be a cloud of judgment on them or on their hearts. I know them personally. East Boston has a history that is, was only second to Ellis Island in terms of how many immigrants came into this country. It is an immigrant city in East Boston. Of course, all of Boston is as well. So as we have this conversation, we need to really make sure it's focused on the information we're gathering and where it's going, and why and how we have interaction of police enforcement in our public schools. But I do not want, and I will certainly fight against, any characterization of East Boston High School, its administrators, its staff, the folks who volunteer there, and certainly the students in any negative light about the amazing school that it is and the community that I live in.
Thank you so much. Docket 02... Counselor Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to join my colleagues in welcoming Counselor Mejia to the Boston City Council. We also recognize the tremendous contributions and sacrifices of the proud Dominican community here in Boston. I'm also proud to represent the Dominican community in South Boston. So I see the hard work of that community, the determination of that community, of the sacrifices they make for their children, in making our city and our country better. Boston is an immigrant city, as Counselor Edwards mentioned. A hundred years ago, we welcomed the Irish, we welcomed the Italians and other ethnic groups, and now we're proud to welcome other nationalities that come into the city. In the 1970s, we welcomed the Vietnamese, and we saw the tremendous contribution the Vietnamese community has made to our city. But we're also proud of the Dominican community and their outstanding contributions and sacrifices they have made to our city and to our country. Again, I want to say welcome to Counselor Mejia.
Thank you so much. Counselor Wu?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to rise to say congratulations and so excited to, so proud to serve alongside you. And no surprise that you are leading from the heart and always keeping your own lived experiences and the communities front and center in policy discussions. So I look forward, not just to what will come out of this, but the process that you will use to make sure that even in having the conversations, the voices of people who haven't been at the table are leading the conversation. So I'm still watching for the hearing about hearings, and this will be the place to implement that. I wanted to note, just on the policy side, a lot of times we talk about sanctuary safe spaces in the context of schools, and I know many colleagues have done some incredible work on that, but offering to help or recommend at least expanding the, you know, bring in the library system, bring in the health centers and everyone, because each and every place that we can kind of turn into that connection and safe space, we want to make sure the residents are getting to bring those recommendations forth directly to the policymakers. So if there's support, however I can, please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Wu. Counselor O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to commend the maker, the at-large Counselor for Dorchester, for her great, important work. Ask that my name be added. Just really wanted to recognize that it's important for cities to lead in these challenging times, and by setting this and really making your mark right off the bat, you are really embodying the fighting spirit that the city that we all love. So felicitadis, mi amigo.
And Counselor Mejia, you have the first word. You'll have the final word.
Oh, yes, I was touching that button there. So just want to really quickly clarify is that the reason why we substituted the language was because we wanted to include libraries and some of the Boston Youth and Family Centers, because we want to think outside of just schools. These issues are impacting not just students, it's just undocumented populations overall. So that's why we've expanded it to safe spaces, so it's not just about schools. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Docket 0230 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. Moving on to docket 0231 through 0233, Madam Clerk, if you could please read them together.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0231, Counselor Edwards offered the following order for hearing regarding the charter of the city of Boston. Docket number 0232, Counselor Edwards offered the following order regarding a text amendment for Boston zoning code relative to affirmatively furthering fair housing. And docket number 0233, Counselor Edwards offered the following: a home rule petition for a special law regarding an act relative to the zoning board of appeal.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards, do you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate this opportunity to speak about my newest hearing order that regards the charter of the city of Boston. This is to kick off, I think, which will be a very long conversation, an intricate conversation about how the city of Boston chooses to govern itself. And it's time that we have those conversations regularly. Actually, we should have those conversations. I think one of our founding fathers said every 20 years, there should be a revolution. I'm not calling for revolution, but I'm calling for organization and a true understanding of how we will continue as a city. We're kicking off this new year, we're kicking off this new decade. We need to talk about how we run things. And are we running this city in the most effective way, the most reflective way, in a way that actually impacts the day-to-day lives of every Bostonian? Or is the state? Or is just the mayor able to do this? I am not sitting here trying to challenge the power dynamic. What I'm asking is to be very clear about what it is and where it is. Right now, courts would describe our charter as a patchwork of special acts. That means it's everywhere. It's in state law, it's in ordinances, it's in some of our department heads and files, it's also in court cases. So you want to know how to run the city of Boston? Well, figure that out. And if you want to change how we run things, well, try and figure that out. So I'm asking us as colleagues to do that, to do that very thing, to take that patchwork and make it one document. To take that patchwork with one document and add one way to amend it, so that when we have these conversations about how long our terms are, or whether we should have an elected school committee, or whether we should be dealing with certain powers with the mayor, or whether we should be dealing with line items in our budget. See, to me, having those home rules are just adding to the patchwork issue that we already have, everywhere and anywhere on small things. Let's think big, that's what we do as the city of Boston. This hearing order is about how we think big. We'll have folks come in and explain how we got here as a city. We weren't necessarily always in this particular form of government. We had at some point, I just learned, 66 city councilors, then we had to organize that into a smaller one, and then we reorganized ourselves to have district city councilors. So we can do this. So we'll have this conversation. But also, how do we go and move the conversation forward? It's not enough, again, to just change one thing, if at the end of the day, it's going to take a whole bunch of patchwork work to change it again. Instead, I'll be very frank about my motivation, and that is to have one document with the ability to amend it. Now, other people in these meetings that I've had for over two years with many advocates and with the late Counselor Chuck Turner, they wanted specific things to be done. And, well, I think that advocacy and whether those specificities should happen could happen once we have an organized process for it. But I don't want to get bogged down in issues and back and forth about whether we should or shouldn't have an elected school committee. That's putting the cart before the horse. I want to know that the people of Boston can make that decision and that we have the power to do so, and we need to amend our charter to allow them to have the power to do so. At the end of the day, this is about a more democratic Boston. This is about people coming to the table. This is not about who should or shouldn't have power. That answer is very easy. It's the people of Boston. The question is, in the current form, do they really? And I hope that my colleagues will join me and look at the ways in which we can empower Bostonians and how we, as a city council, can be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to ask if anyone wants to speak to docket 0231 or add their name. Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, and Counselor O'Malley, please also add the chair. Counselor Edwards, did you want to speak to the other dockets? Would you want to speak? Yes, please. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam President. I just quickly wanted to thank Counselor Edwards for the hearing order. I was excited to see them on the agenda and frankly, creating this space for all of us to come together and talk about charter review, which has been, I think, conversations that happen in silos or counselors having them within their office, particularly when trying to get things done. Most of what we try to do has to go through home rule petition. Most of our constituents don't understand that. We lower our speed limits, we have to go to the State House, they don't know why. So creating a space where not only we, but our constituents can show up to have a basic understanding of how the city operates in our limitations in being effective advocates, I think, is awesome. So thank you, Counselor Edwards, for bringing the hearing order forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you very much. This is on docket 0233, the affirmatively...
And are you also going to speak to 0232?
I just want... Which ones would you want me to do?
Go ahead.
Both of them?
In order, if we could take it in order, that would be great. So 232.
Sorry, Madam President, and thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
This is a refile on a matter that I filed last year. We had a brief hearing, actually a very good hearing on the affirmatively furthering fair housing. And essentially, what this is doing is taking the standards from the 1968 Fair Housing Act, that was a federal law, that was actually very close to Massachusetts because it was the late Senator Ed Brooke who actually introduced that law and got it passed. It really didn't become to fruition for many people until President Obama interpreted it to this specific language, to affirmatively further for housing, to say more than just, it can't just be about not discriminating anymore. That is not what that language is supposed to do. That language is saying we need to remove all obstacles to opportunity, and we need to do so in our housing policy. That's a federal mandate. That is how it was interpreted by the Obama administration. And that is actually how the city of Boston has picked up that interpretation, and not only our Boston Housing Authority, but also in Department of Neighborhood Development. What this amendment does is say, adding to that stool is the BPDA. We want the BPDA to also affirmatively further for housing in its planning stage. Right now, they would argue, and they did argue, that they do so when they advertise the units after it's been built. That, to me, is too late. And I think we have a perfect example of when you only think about inclusivity when it comes to race, when it comes to gender, when it comes to families who are protected under this, people with disabilities, when it comes to LGBTQ folks, when you're thinking about those after the fact, after it's been built and after the planning has been done, you can end up with the seaport, which is not reflective of any of those populations right now. You don't plan for it, you don't get it. And that's what this amendment is demanding, that we plan for this, that we look at the impact of the density that we choose, of the fact that we are choosing more micro-units or one-bedrooms over three-bedrooms and four-bedrooms. What does that say to families? Can they actually come in there? You can advertise all you want, but if your affordability is at a rate that's higher than most people's average income, it's not affordable. And we should be honest about that. We should be clear about that. And we're asked to be clear about several things when we do file, about the impact on climate change, about the impact on traffic. We're asking our planners to plan for a lot of complicated things. So I'm saying this is one more thing to add to their job, to look at the impact of their decisions on these particular populations. And I know we can do that as the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Edwards. Anyone else looking to speak to docket 0232 or add their name? Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, and please add the chair. Counselor Edwards, would you like to speak to docket 0233?
Yes. Again, this is another refile. Unfortunately, we did not get to a hearing last year. We hope to get to a hearing this year. This is regarding the zoning board of appeal. Specifically, what I called for last year is a reform of the entire ZBA. We need to look at it top to bottom. There are certain statute, statuted positions, excuse me, or positions by statute that are required, and I wonder if those requirements from 1962 should still be applicable today. I think we need to have a comprehensive conversation and ask, why don't we have somebody by statute who's an environmentalist? Why don't we have someone by statute who's historic preservation? Why don't we have someone who is actually a zoning lawyer or knows the zoning law? None of those folks are required to be there. This is not getting rid of anyone's seat, as some people have criticized arguing whether I'm getting rid of labor's seat, or whether I'm getting rid of the real estate developer's seat, or the real estate agent's seats. Those are all our seats. And the question is, are we defining them in a way that actually reflect the current building, zoning, and development needs of Boston today? So I look forward to having a robust hearing, and I hope that we can get this hearing order done. To the mayor's credit, last year when this was introduced, he had me sit down with Sullivan Worcester, which is a law firm that he had already commissioned to look at the ZBA as well. So I think this is going to be a cohesive, comprehensive, very good conversation about what we can do by statute and also what we can do right away, such as maybe some of the hearings shouldn't be at 9 o'clock in the morning, could we consider some evening hearings? That's how comprehensive this conversation would be, and I think it'd be really inclusive. And I wanted to give credit to the mayor for his already sitting down at the table.
Thank you so much. Anyone else looking to speak or add their name? This is docket 0233. Please add Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, and please also add the chair. Dockets 0231 through docket 0233 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0234?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0234, Counselor Flaherty offered the following order for a hearing regarding the city's pilot payments.
Counselor Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam President. I know that folks have heard me say this so many times. Boston is home to some of the best colleges, universities, hospitals, and cultural institutions in the world. These institutions provide enormous value to our city, bringing... They're some of Boston's largest employers. They're bringing in thousands of jobs, educational, cultural, and economic opportunities to our city. And as an at-large councilor, I've worked hard for years around pilot reform, and my efforts focused not only on increasing revenue via the pilot program, but also through changes in the funding formula, as well as contribution levels on a broader and more sweeping systemic reform. I've advocated for changes in how the pilot system is organized in order to boost levels of standardization, transparency, and accountability in the program. And also during my time as city council president, I created City Council Committee on Pilot Reform. That committee's work was critical in the creation of the new pilot program back around 2011, 2012, which sought increased payments from Boston's 48 largest tax-exempt institutions. That program, while no longer new, is obviously definitely in need of reform, and it led to close to a 30% increase in collective revenue for our city. While I applaud the improvements to the city's pilot program and fully appreciate the contributions of our tax-exempt institutions that they make to our city, our tax-exempt institutions must pay their fair share for their use of our city revenues and our city services. The values which pilot agreements are based on were last assessed back in fiscal year '09, and according to the original pilot task force, the valuation should be reviewed after the first five years. This means that we're more than five years overdue on renegotiations. Last year's property value reached a historic $164 billion. As property values continue to increase across our city, our taxpayers are seeing increased tax bills each quarter. I think it's unacceptable that our tax-exempt institution are paying pilot program payments on 2009 values while city residents are paying on 2020 values. The hearing order will allow us an opportunity to discuss how pilot agreements are formulated, negotiated, implemented, and maintained, and also review pilot revenue and explore new ideas regarding how to increase revenue from these voluntary agreements, which, for folks' edification, it's governed by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59. I'll continue to support any efforts to increase revenue via the pilot that will benefit our city and also to bring resources throughout all of our neighborhoods. So thank you for the time and attention, and encourage folks to sign on and look forward to an expedited hearing.
Thank you so much. Counselor Flaherty? Anyone else looking to speak or add their name? Counselors Arroyo, Counselor Baker, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Sabi George, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, Counselor O'Malley, and please also add the chair. Docket 0234 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 023... Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0235?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0235, Counselor Edwards and Asabi George offer the following ordinance establishing a payment in lieu of taxes program.
Thank you. Either of you looking to speak? Counselor Edwards?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is following up on the conversations Counselor, all of the council had last year, but Counselor Asabi George and I also led on the pilot and specifically talking about... Should I continue?
I'm sorry, yes. I'm going too fast. Go ahead. Please, you have the floor. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Madam President. Continuing on to the many conversations, I want to thank you for the continuance of that general conversation, Counselor Flaherty, and your leadership prior to actually, I think, being part of the team to negotiate one of the most comprehensive deals and getting $30 million, I want to say. I don't want to miss, please, I don't want to undervalue your, but your work, but $30 million in the first comprehensive pilot deal and agreement. So it's basically off of that language and that goodwill that the city had assumed the institutions would continue, that we're still having this conversation. So I wanted to thank Counselor Flaherty for his leadership. Today, this is, we're offering an ordinance, however, that is encouraging the City of Boston to take more leadership. While we want the pilots and the institutions to step up, I think in many cases, we need the city to also codify where it can codify and move. There's aspects that no longer should be voluntary. There's also transparency that shouldn't be up to them to determine. Let me give you an example. A lot of the institutions have removed property or land out of the tax base, but they'll put something on there that's taxable, like a Dunkin' Donuts. In prior administrations, that income difference, what was, or the square footage difference, what was taxable, what was not, and how much was generated, was given to the city. That's not happening anymore. We want to make, bring that back and codify and require. If you have taxable income on your non-taxable land, you need to demonstrate and tell us what that is as a City of Boston. Also, as they grow and change, which is awesome, it's necessary that the cities, that the institutions grow and change, we want to make sure that the assessing department is required, actually, to just use the 2020 current values. I think that we are choosing not to. We are choosing to do that, but we have access to the land that they have reported so far, and we're choosing to use 2012 values. It makes no sense to me why we make that choice, and I'm asking the City Council to tell the administration that they no longer have that choice and that they will be assessing it at 2020 values. Finally, this ordinance is setting up a task force to evaluate the existing program and establish standards for community benefits. I think at this point, we had tried to volunteer our way into that. We did hire a person to run the CBAs, or Community Benefit Agreements, and I think at this point, we had asked for them to work with community, and now I think I'd like to tell them to work with community and set up a task force of community members who will define what the actual community benefits are. Just again, for this bodies and the new members' education, as you know, 25% of the assessed property value is considered part of the pilot agreement. Half of that is in community benefits, the other half is cash. Community benefits aren't defined. And when they are defined, and when they are given to us by the universities, it's all over the place. And I personally think, and I think many of my colleagues would think, that community benefits should be defined by the community, maybe coming up with 10 or 15 things that can be provided, and then we should monitor that they're provided. So this is not only, this is actually complementing Counselor Flaherty's ordinance, but also bringing the administration to the table and requiring them to also do certain things as well.
Thank you. Counselor Asabi George?
Thank you again, Madam President. And just to echo, I think the comments for Counselor Flaherty and his longtime work on this effort, and to echo and ditto the comments of Counselor Edwards on this piece, I'm happy to continue this work in this new term and think that it's critically important as a council that we are holding the institutions that occupy so much real estate in our city accountable for payment. We get calls, all of us get calls in our office every single day, I'm sure, at least weekly, about the rising costs of property tax across the city, for homeowners, for property owners, and yet we have not reevaluated so much property in the City of Boston that is in the hands of some very large and wealthy institutions. It's the universities, it's the hospitals, it's cultural institutions in our city. So we have so much work left undone. I think that the language in this ordinance really, I think, confirms and solidifies the work that is left undone that we need to get to as a city and as a council. So I look forward to that, early in this term, getting back to this, getting back to this effort and holding, really, these institutions, who are our partners in so much of our work, accountable for the impacts they have in our city, and certainly applaud the great asset they are in our city, but realize that we need to be thoughtful about how they are fulfilling their commitment to us as a city and make sure that that information is up to date. Again, I appreciate Counselor Edwards' leadership in this piece and certainly Counselor Flaherty's leadership in this work to date and as a body, the work that is ahead. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else looking to speak or add their name? Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mahia, Counselor O'Malley, and please add the Chair. Anyone at home wondering about these two dockets, both dealing with pilot? The first one that we heard from, from Counselor Flaherty, was a hearing order, and the second one from Edwards and Asabi George was an ordinance. So that's why we have the two. We will now move on to personnel orders. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0236?
Docket 0236, Counselor Janey for Counselor Bach.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk. Did we refer docket 0235 to the Committee of the Whole? We did not. So, before we do that, docket 0235 will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. Thank you. Now, could you please read docket 0236?
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0236, Counselor Janey for Counselor Bach.
Counselor Bach seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0236. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0236 has been passed.
Docket 0237, Counselor Janey for Counselor Bach.
Counselor Bach seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0237. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0237 has been passed.
Docket 0238, Counselor Janey for Counselor Wu.
Counselor Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0238. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0238 has been passed. Now, moving on to late files. I am informed by the Clerk that there is one late file matter before us, which in the absence of objection will be added to the agenda. Hearing and seeing no objection, it is added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please read the matter?
Offered by Counselor Baker in the year 2020, an ordinance amending Chapter 2-15.3 of the City of Boston Code ordinances regarding lobbyist registration and regulations.
Thank you. Counselor Baker?
Would you like me to read all of it?
Sure.
We're just into, thank you. Be it ordained by the City Council of Boston as follows. Amending City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 2, Section 2-15.3, registration and reporting requirements as follows. Deleting the following language. Notice of termination of status as a lobbyist lobbying entity or client shall also be filed promptly with the city clerk. Filed in the Council, January 15, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Baker?
Thank you, Madam President. We're submitting this late file today because we've just begun our first full-year reporting period of the lobbying ordinance. This was not my legislation. The main author, I guess, was unavailable for this one. Last Thursday, it was discovered that the termination status language is prohibiting individuals from filing their reports for the fourth quarter of 2019 and are due on January 20, 2020. The IT Department of the City of Boston created an online portal for the registration and reporting of lobbyists, lobbying entities, and clients. All activities required by this ordinance are processed and completed electronically. Upon registration, each lobbyist, lobbying entity, and client are assigned a registration number, which they will use as long as they are engaged in lobbying with the City of Boston. The language we are seeking to delete is necessary to allow the system to create active and inactive designations. Once someone is terminated, they are unable to file their quarterly reports for each reporting period, which is the overall purpose of the legislation. The city's quarterly reporting is twice as much as the federal and state government, so we're doing double what the state and feds require. This change will allow each lobbyist, lobbying entity, and client to keep their same registration number as long as they are lobbying in the City of Boston. A termination would require the creation of a new registration number, which creates conflict restricting access to the online portal. This change will eliminate the manual adjustments of notice of termination and simplify the process for those assessing the online lobbying application. It will also create a seamless process for the staff of the Clerk's office who interacts with the system on a daily basis. This is a technical issue and does not affect the legislation. And just for another point of clarification, I did not vote on this ordinance. Thank you. I did not vote for this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else looking to speak? Okay. The late file will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. Thank you, Counselor Baker.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Okay. No one? Great. I've been informed by the Clerk that we have no additions to the consent agenda, which is wonderful. I move for, the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. Announcements. We're moving on to announcements. Counselor Flynn, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam President, for giving me this opportunity. I wanted to talk a little about a resolution myself and Counselor Campbell worked on last week. It was in celebrating Jewish and Proud Day. In recent months, we've seen, and over the last several years, we've seen many antisemitism issues taking place across the country, including a recent stabbing of a Jewish man in New York City. A survey found that one out of three American Jews do not wear their traditional customary clothing because they face antisemitism and discrimination oftentimes. With that in mind, we wanted to make sure that we reached out to the Jewish community here in Boston to let them know that antisemitism is something we take very seriously in this city. We treat everybody fairly in this city, whether you're new to the country as an immigrant, a longtime resident, someone with disabilities, regardless of your sexual orientation as well. I'm also scheduled to meet, we have other types of discrimination as well. I'm scheduled to meet next week with the, with some Muslim members in a prayer service organized by Youssef Valley from the Immigration Advancement Department. But again, a threat, a threat to justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, as we recently heard at the Martin Luther King Celebration. And that's why I'm trying to continue to work with our colleagues in the city government, working with the Mayor. Counselor Zakin was a strong leader on antisemitism, but he was a strong leader on anti-discrimination against anyone. So I just wanted to let our colleagues know that we have this resolution and want to say thank you to Counselor Campbell as well for her incredible work, and Counselor Janey, and all of my colleagues in the past have supported antisemitism language. So again, just want to say thank you to my colleagues for giving me, giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. Counselor Flynn, Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. I just want to thank Counselor Flynn for the partnership and for acknowledging the resolution, which would have appeared on the last council meeting but wasn't appropriate given all that we were doing on that first meeting to acknowledge then. So thank you for acknowledging it. And obviously, given the number of antisemitic incidents we're seeing, not just across the country, but also in Massachusetts, and many of these don't often go reported, right? Sometimes they affect a large group of people at one time, or sometimes they affect one person. But it's important to acknowledge that they are still happening, and I think, just like we don't expect people of color to take on incidents of racism by themselves, it's important that we stand with our Jewish brothers and sisters when it comes to not only confronting issues of antisemitism, talking about them, and then taking action to do something about it. And as I always say, government can only do so much at a certain point. Folks have to look within their individual hearts to change their perspective on who is other, and that's more challenging and more difficult work to do, and I encourage everyone to do it. So thank you again, Counselor Flynn, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just wanted to wish in advance everyone a happy and thoughtful and reflective MLK Day coming up, or Martin Luther King Day coming up this Monday. And I wanted to just say thank you so much to the 12th Baptist Church. I have the opportunity for the first time to visit them and to speak, and I just wanted to acknowledge not only that opportunity, my colleagues who are also there, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Asabi George, our new counselors, Arroyo and Counselor Mahia, but I also wanted to note, I'm getting there, Madam President, that the President received an award, to her surprise, for her leadership at that time. So I wanted to echo their reflection of your leadership and your heart, and it was beautiful to see that surprise. And I also wanted to congratulate Sheriff Steve Tompkins, who gave a wonderful speech talking about how he, as a, well, he's a sheriff, and as he runs the correction facilities, he is doing his best to be, I think it's a chain breaker and a liberator was the terms that were used that night, so thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for acknowledging that. I'm sure people will celebrate throughout the rest of this week and certainly on the holiday on Monday. But for those who don't know, Dr. King's birthday is actually today, January 15. It is also my nephew's birthday, Tariq. Happy birthday, Tariq. And my brother's birthday, Kari. Happy birthday, Kari. Anyway, I'd like to now ask, unless there are other announcements? Anyone else? Okay. I'd now like to ask all guests and members to please rise. We will adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individual, for Counselor Campbell Shirley Brooks. If we could take a moment? Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individual. The council is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, January 9, at 12:00 p.m., noon, here in the Ayonella Chamber at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Say it again. Aye, yes. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned. Thank you so much.